I don't think there was much really discussed. I think it's pretty short.
I'll make a motion that's expensive.
Yeah, all, all fair.
Just make a motion accept.
Say it. Can you have any new business for zoning administrator or anything happen this month?
I've been mostly quiet. I've talked to some people about putting some signs. One or two. Had some inquiries from permits behind the Legion.
The Russell Mill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, had some, per I issued a permit to Patton. For his little shed that I discussed with you guys last time. I've issued that to him.
Okay.
And I had a call for the Buffalo statue that I saw Fred had left me a message for. I had called, he called me earlier in the month. I called him, like voicemail didn't hear back. Called him again, haven't heard back.
Still have it for now.
Yeah, but do you have an inbox?
Yeah.
Well, I called one of your car.
Oh.
But you do have an inbox.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I empty it weekly because what I do at rental, rentals, I.
Yeah.
It's full.
Yeah, but I think I called her twice.
He's young, shoot him a text.
And I, I get so many calls with work too. I usually answer them. I voice those.
Okay.
But I maybe I need to see.
I wasn't just concerned about being somebody else calling, you know, I wasn't, you know.
Do you know where they're wanting to put that thing? That's that same one? Is that that same Buffalo Springs Buffalo that he's running around?
Yeah, yeah, I don't really want it. You haven't got to talk to him yet.
No. I mean, if they put that on town property, they won't need a permit, right? They'll just need to talk to you guys.
Just make sure it's okay.
Right. Yeah.
You have a, is if I ever gonna hold him, do you guys have a source and where do you recommend him putting it? Or want him to put it?
I don't.
Is that town property over there by the Bison?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's probably be the best place for him to go.
Is that acceptable to everybody if they can hold him? And then I dealt with the eight one two studios. I talked to Larry, their business owner, Melissa here. About the Facebook post might send me about tattoos. She gave her the word in signing, she might be here to speak. But that's all I did.
Melissa Barnes, Beezer and Company LLC. My, my dad would like that name of the company.
Yeah.
You don't see that right?
I know, it's very rare. I remember growing up, that was the only other Beezer I knew. So, I'm used to standing over this stuff and I'm nervous. I'll probably start shaking. The last time out, I got to stand in front of a board. It was over something that I was very nervous to talk about. I'm a huge advocate for child sexual abuse, so I did that in front of Fringe Lick the last time, it was last year. This time, I've decided to create a business. It's all aesthetic work. We did get word that it, the word tattoo got brought up. I use the word and I'll be honest about it because permanent makeup and tattoo was very similar. I didn't want to stress the fact that I do use aesthetic pen and things like that across some artwork as well too. Main thing was, I just want to make sure that we get approved for permanent makeup before we move any further. I've invested quite a bit of money into this since and time as well too, so I don't want to get into a place and then find out, you know, we're, we can't do these things. My huge thing is, is I am, I'm a word of mouth person. I don't want to advertise for tattooing. That's not at all what I'm doing. For offering aesthetic things. It's all things beauty. So basically, just trying to figure out what the clause for the laws are and going from there is kind of where I'm at with all of this. So, I'm here kind of to hear your guys' opinion on it, how I can go about with my business since I'm trying to do everything the legal way as possible. I got certified in permanent makeup along with, it does use the word tiny tattoos, which are using an aesthetic pen, so I'm not stressed out about even doing anything like that. My main thing was being able to do eyebrows. So, being able to move forward, I wanted to make sure our business was safe, mine as well, but also Studio Eight One Two, I want to make sure that we're a hundred percent safe all the way around.
Yeah, I think when I was only, you've done all this, that would be something you thought about like.
Right.
I know my sister, you know, she's got it. I can call her, well, you know, but her makeup doesn't come off. It stays.
Right, and it's, it's nice that the world is starting to shift to that so that we can walk in and not have to have makeup taped on. Me personally, I've done makeup for twenty years for weddings and different events. It is nice being able to walk around with a fresh, fresh face and not stress, you know? So, being able to offer that to our community. I do work at Big Red Liquors. I've had so many people coming from the hotel looking for a business that offers this. I'm nervous right now to even say that I do offer the services because I want to make sure that we're safe in, in our county. I know that we've gotten denied several times with other tattoo parlors. That is not what we are at all, aesthetic business. So, as far as like neon signs, vibrant games out front, we're not going to have any of that. It's just ladies coming in, even men. I've had men offer, to offer their bases to me and stuff like that. But I just want to make sure that we are safe and whole and we're capable of doing this and moving forward. I did get licensed with the state and approved through the health department as well too, so that's kind of where I didn't think about zoning. This is really what it came down to.
Okay.
So, just even being able to help me understand maybe the laws or the clauses, whatever, so that I know that I'm doing everything correctly upon our account.
My understanding, I think it was tattoos in, in the old general sense, is I think what are, and like Fred had mentioned, this is something not the same, but not the same. It's not, it's not a tattoo we have that we all think of, you know, that sort of thing. There might be, I, I personally don't have a problem with, with what they propose, but since it's that.
Aesthetic.
Yes, aesthetics not actual in the old formal sense of tattoos.
Right.
We might, is that something we might have to run by J C just to make sure legally wise, there's nothing?
I did bring all my stuff with me just in case if you guys want to check it out. So you guys kind of.
Yeah, I was talking about J R. I'm around the house. I mean, we gotta have somebody to do it.
Yeah, right.
Or Jim over here. Jim would do it.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I just, I brought everything just in case that way you guys could see what I was doing along with the aesthetic artwork. Which, like I said, most people can consider it as a tattoo. That's not how I'm advertising it as. The only advertising I do on Facebook. So I'm trying to make everybody understand that that's not what we are doing.
I thought that was looking.
Yeah, absolutely.
Kind of get a better idea of what they are. Would you care, would you be opposed to, I, I don't know what your timeline is, would you be opposed to staying until the next meeting just because our, our board will be here? We can run this by him and maybe he could tell us yes or no quickly or so we don't waste our time. Yeah, or if we can approve it with a variance or something.
Absolutely. I ran it through my cousin, Honey Kim Reynolds, who just got this law degree.
Yes.
So we were kind of making sure that we were safe there.
Okay.
I do make everybody sign waivers and clauses like that. I do know the difference between botox, it's, we're, we're all using needles. When it comes down to it, the only difference between botox or Disport or E is solely that one is generated in the lab. The E is not regulated quite like a bacterial injection system. So botox is all of them, is bacterial, is what they're using to do all of it. So, just to give you an idea on that stuff, but I did bring two different forms of what I'm doing. So that's aesthetic artwork there, but this is eyebrows. And like I said, I'm just hoping to get in there and be able to do eyebrows professionally. I don't want to do it inside my home solely because it, it doesn't, it doesn't look good. I've, I've done, you know, everything and got certified so that I can be out. The pen, this is the pen. It doesn't make a single noise when it's on. It is on right now. It makes no noise. It's super simple. All the needles, right, all the needles are actually all in one package. So, everything is sanitary a hundred percent. It's very similar to piercing gears.
J R want to check this out?
But everything is done very classy. It's all fake based as well too. I'm very firm on this, on fake based stuff. I do direct the pageant for town, trying to get the Cinderella pageant back in order as well too. So, I'm trying to do things that help promote women in this county and, and what we can do. Kind of thing.
To, to me.
Exactly.
Makeup is one thing.
Right. Exactly. Right. Right. And that's kind of where I, I'm at with it. I want to make sure that I'm doing everything correctly. One's aesthetic and then aesthetic artwork is the only difference in it. And why it's considered different is solely because of the pen versus a gun.
Yeah, it's pretty neat, like I said, and I hope. It's growing. Yeah, it's, it's a big thing. It is.
The amount of money it could bring into our community is huge. It's kind of how I felt about it and I'm willing to donate whatever I can to make sure that we get to move forward.
Well, if you want to hang it like, I, I have some interest in, so, I mean, J R gets our, J R.
J C.
J C, too many initials. He gets here and, you know, we'll get you in and out. You don't have to give.
People are fine. My kids already know what I'm doing, so they already know that they're waiting on dinner right now.
Oh, they already know.
Go away, yes.
Okay.
They got done with football. They know, they know what they're waiting on, so.
All right.
But I currently appreciate you guys letting me come in and show you what I'm doing and, and hopefully we can get approved and move forward.
Yeah, let's talk to J C once he gets here and then we'll hopefully get, get you better.
Thank you guys very much.
Rick, I think?
You were going, are they not going to put donuts in over there now that we got the bakery over here?
I've never, it's been years since I've.
I don't know. They're chasing over the.
So that may have completely died, maybe now. I, I haven't heard about it for three, four years, roughly.
Oh, hey, hey, while I'm thinking of it, I was working with Mike, my cousin, with a problem with his electric. Lady across the street, did you guys talk to her about her truck, her camper and her truck?
She recently just bought it and was parking it there.
Is that not allowed?
It's allowed. We're just making sure no others are living in it.
Yeah.
Oh, living in it, because she thought she had to do all that stuff.
She was fine because I had driven by there a couple of times, like, is there somebody living in that thing? Because we know there's been issues over there before and that's why we just want to make sure.
Oh.
No, so.
Because she kept on talking to me.
No, because I asked, well, I asked Jeannie, I said, is somebody living in that? She said, no. I said, okay, then it's all good then. I was just making sure.
Oh, okay.
No, no.
Get on that for some reason, so I'll let her know that it's li, it's all licensed.
Yeah.
They just took that out with.
Yeah, that's what she said. They got that from trip, but.
Yeah.
You go to big concerns like, is somebody living in it?
Yeah.
That's a whole nother.
Yeah, another thing, but she's okay then. Because it's all licensed, okay. Right, I just want to make sure it checks because she's thinking she has to move it.
Then on that, I guess somebody, there is a state law about living in campers?
I used to sell RVs, that's how I know.
There is against law unless you're a person that has permanent water and sewage hookups for you. Then you can kind of skirt the law. But, yeah, so there's that too. Plus whatever ordinances we have, so you can throw that at the state.
There's so many gray areas. I learned years I did zoning, there's, there's stuff that obviously makes sense and there's stuff that, you know, doesn't.
Doesn't ever make sense.
It's just like.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of gray area, I felt like there's a lot of ways we can address that at some point, you know, as we got the zoning, that'd be one of them, you know, stuff like that.
You know, that's a long, bigger conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's what I got, and I just, I almost forgot.
We, we're talking last week, did you guys make a decision at the town board about the dumping that road down those three houses?
We, we told them that they needed to get the licensed engineer and bring sexual plans on it. They're not doing it.
Will that, will they bring?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I think yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be. But they were supposed to contact U S I.
And they did because Tara had contacted me, like I was talking to her about something a week or two after that, and she said they had contacted her, so I don't know how far along they were in the process, but they had reached out to. Just waiting, getting right now. Make a motion here.
Say it.
All fair. Where they built those new.
Yeah.
Right behind it.
They built, will you guys let me know when it's decided for J C to stop?
Yeah.
Just so I know further if anybody had anything else to say to him.
Thank you.
I seen some of it, but I couldn't follow it.
I'm sure they're gonna be here next year on Friday night, so Friday, Saturday, which I've forgotten.
You should have.
Okay, so I'll get, yeah. So they're wanting. So, we're on a, we're gonna do daily, we're gonna, we're just only, we'll have a whole day, but then on Saturday. So, he wants to, he wants to all be here, you know, like, at eight thirty in the morning. That's two representatives. Most of them are to kind of show them, you know, the, the place you can have open swap rooms. And he wants other ones to ask to go to, like, make more questions and have like.
Yeah, she's not showering. She's been riding.
We have like, we've, we've.
I can do that.
You don't have much time, so.
I need to do this, but.
This is the first time. So he's saying we will visit, but he doesn't know that there's a lot still to learn. It's badly licensed. It's just like, show ourselves under that line. We might offer the first, we tattoo yourself. And then it's temporary, but it has to be passable for the.
It's bound to be.
There's, there's a story, it's not cheap, people up there, it's all on us, you know? Yeah. That's the way, probably, I just go up and say, she's like, okay, she's like, I said, I'm going somewhere another, whether we make it. And I said, I was worried. Like, if we do that, then they can't meet that deadline.
Yeah.
I said, so if, if. I guess. Is that a person? Like, how's this? Where else is it? They say, no.
We're going about it, we're not getting our engineer a little bad.
Right, exactly.
So is there money there now?
Yes, and now, he said, we've made it to the final stage of the. He said, now, before we. Now, I made all of these included. So that would make it to three million. Well, and he also told me too, he said, I want to end up first, like, I know, she did go up there with this, but he was like, under the. He said, if they make a second trip, he said, I think they're really short on estimates. Basically, they're, you know, they might not be important. Why is it that it's, because they're saying now that they're actually.
Have to put.
So he said, there's not having.
Sounds like it's all culture.
Yeah, I know, but, yeah. Right, yeah. Yeah.
And I kind of, I think you kind of said it and.
That's not. Yeah. Yeah. So I've got a few questions still, if we don't. That's where I can have a little grant. Which we don't want to get into because we had one of those someplace here and.
We're in nine years.
So.
I eat it too. They're here. A lot of new. Like, I don't want, this is so, so.
Yeah, we're still live.
I watch what you're saying.
That kid right there. Oh, the little one down there is, uh, Romaker.
Lester.
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 That's Lester.
Yeah, the other two.
Yeah, the other two, I don't know.
Lester's twenty five years ago, I took that picture and they asked me to go one day. What thing in your hand?
Well, you know, we, we redone that, you know, our club redone that.
That's something.
You don't.
I don't like them now, forget it.
Our heights and goals. I don't know. There's another guy standing over here with his hand over the toolbox.
Says buy a truck, he's having a turn on one, but I didn't, you know, the best didn't work, but I gave her one. Who was it? Of course, my co-host, we all these people.
I said, no, I don't know. I've got paid. Forgot who that guy is.
He had some do a lot of little things. That'd be long here, man.
Yeah.
I don't know why they self-did it a lot. I understand that.
Is that where his park?
Terry Hill.
Okay.
Oh, sure. Saying, I guess they got the same goals up there now. I just want.
What's up, Billy?
Oh, yeah. Anyway. You push that.
For it to go up.
It goes down. You push it, go, go up. It goes up. I think it's all good.
He's getting.
We're hard to get. But it's sitting on the back.
Probably back, I took that all the way on there. Basically, some people say, get them bottle jacks out of there. They're leaking enough of the wires. At all.
I called up and I called up and told her, I said, can you get a priest or something to come in here? Bless his son.
He didn't.
Yeah. No. Just took him like two, two, three days to find out what the damn problem was with the water. So he changed it on switch there three times for the, you know, brake switch to get that part. It worked. It worked. That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. You guys over here. Yeah. You got sure you're good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Billy.
It says stream ended. But it says here live.
Yeah, it's been live for twenty five minutes, so.
So.
Yeah, since five thirty.
The stream's not ended then.
No, if you hit that, it will be.
Oh, in-stream.
Yeah.
But, well, can I just hit it to come back on? Your stream will stop immediately and you will no longer be live.
Unless you might not ask.
Yeah.
Okay, ready. Yeah.
I did, uh, I sent it to Kathy, but.
Okay. This is why it was still rolling, I said in-stream.
Let me see here. Let's see if it'll pause if we hit in-stream. Then you can pause it right now and then if you hit not yet, let me see, make sure it's not. That's what it was earlier. So it's still running.
It's still sitting on that.
Yeah. The only thing if we stop it, then.
Well, we can leave it. It's only one meeting a month, so.
Yeah.
So we can just let it go.
Yeah, once you end it, it'll, I mean, if you, if you want like six months at a different time, then you have to set.
Then you have to set up, so when we're done today, we just hit in-stream.
Yep, that's it.
Cap.
Yeah.
He came in here and painted.
Yeah.
Paintings like they do there.
Still pretty sharp. Still some life. Business up there.
It's weird how some people. He painted it. I thought that was great.
Yeah, the first house on that deal.
Yeah, my first name was like two hundred.
Really?
That's for the landscape project. You're a whole.
The family get together place.
So. I did.
Just in your book. Get you an apple.
Geez.
I ain't got them just leaky. I'm sad, I take that road.
It's useless.
Yeah, yeah.
We had a bunch. Yeah, definitely. You should send your back on, but apparently not. Well, that's kind of odd.
Now you start.
Probably, yeah, probably. For discussing. Anyway, yeah, I don't know. You know, it's tattoo. I had all the two of them. Oh. I got to me that one, that guy. That's probably him. There is paint too, and that's what we do. He did never hurt. I don't know if I can do it. Yeah. I turned the shoes, like, turned around. That's what I think. Well, that's why I got a lot of for things. I probably need to talk to him. Who was this before? Yeah, two days. Hello, little angel.
See, I'm sorry. It's okay. Oh, it's okay.
Hi, how are you? You look pretty. Very pretty in pink.
Tracheal, a little red.
There you go. No, I'm at the courthouse.
Nice.
I work, um, for CBO.
Nice. How long have you been out of the school?
Oh, gosh, probably six, seven years.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Is it? Is it really?
You're helping more people this.
Yeah. That's true, but I miss the kids. I miss the little ones. Get out there, J.C. About thirty minutes.
Twenty, twenty-five to thirty minutes every day.
This clock right there.
Yeah, it's, it's six oh one, but I was trying to get up for J.C.
Billy have the link?
Yeah, go ahead, okay. Yes, he had the link.
Okay. J.C.
Studio. Another question came up. Not for so. It's not, listen, you wanna give him kind of the skill instead of me, because you'll be able to talk about.
Both of them are considered aesthetic artwork. Um, it's not technically tattooing, even though that's how most people view it as. The difference is the pen that I use compared to a gun that most people use. I brought it with me just to make sure to check it out. Wanted to make sure that what I was doing was legal and I don't want to do anything that might start the town's reputation is what it comes down to. I don't, I'll never have me on signs out on posted as tattooing. That was on my map the first time that I had mentioned something instead of using aesthetic or permanent or anything along those lines. Everything I do is not even considered permanent, semi-permanent. Um, aesthetic gun that I send and I use is about two times half the size of what everybody else uses. With it on. That's on, you can hold it, you can feel it and that's about it, you can feel the vibration. That there's, that's all that is to it. Just try to make sure that what we're doing is legal and correct by.
So we didn't know if. Well, we were, we, I think, discussed it. But I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody's.
That's true.
Yeah.
Anyway, I was gonna say.
All right. Nice, thank you so much, really appreciate you, thank you, appreciate you.
I told you, because they would make you get the whole.
A little more painless than what I do, I guess.
Good to see you.
You guys have a great day.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks.
Okay, so Adam, you'll have to be the one to call the meeting to order. President Chipman is not here.
He will, yes?
Yeah, yeah. I'll call the meeting in order. Make the motion, just wait for three minutes. All second, all favor. Aye. Make the motion, sit, sit, men. All second, all favor, aye. Mr. Ossad, Luke.
You can, if you want, it's up to you, you don't have to. Come closer to us.
All right.
Get on camera.
For the, uh, more officially, more officially, the live tonight, we have to have a call. We just have.
You're good, you're good.
Uh, so I'm tracking, you guys are doing work for Scott Phillips, who is below me, uh, coming up next month on some water drainage issues. Uh, I spoke with him the other day and he suggested coming in, I messaged Fred. Um, I've got water drainage living above Scott as well. Um, mostly my issues are when heavy rains, it, uh, overflows Kirk Stevenson's drainage ditch there on the south side. Uh, what I would propose or ask assistance with is extending the curb on the north side of the road, uh, all the way to the natural runoff. Uh, so maybe thirty foot of curb.
So the street above it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, uh, through road.
Kirk's downspouts also run to that trough, so that even adds more to it when we get heavy rains.
And then that overflows on that, on my other side.
We would have to see who owns the property that to extend, if you want to extend it, uh, to the ditch, right? You want to go that way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think I own that third, uh, it's like a quarter lot. Uh, that you're talking about.
Yeah. Well, that's probably something we can do.
Yeah.
Joey, Dave Wosko, who got it.
That's it.
See, cause I know you're getting some of that too, the same. Because it's like, oh, his downspouts come right into that and it's not that deep anyway.
It doesn't help Scott, but at least he gets away from, from my house.
Yeah.
You know what we're talking about?
Yeah.
We'll just get with, um, we can do, if he needs to, just we'll just get with. Keep Dave busy, I know he's busy doing a lot of, a lot of stuff, but just if he, have him look at it, it should be a crazy amount of work, thirty foot of curb or something, at least it's not, we don't have a lot, so.
Tell him about it, you go and forget.
Okay. And if he needs to talk to one of us to go or something, can, if he needs to.
How big will he get?
Okay. We'll look at it, we'll, it should be, it's not a big of a deal. We'll get to take care of Luke.
Glad to have you in town, buddy. Glad you're back.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll find.
That's all he got.
You have any commitments he'd like to make?
I hope I work them up already.
When you think about it, that curb is longer with more committee drawn. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Thank you. J.C.
First.
Sir. Oh, you wanna go first?
I have to go first because it's a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Um, public hearing tonight, the general budget estimate is one million, one oh five, three eighty-five. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, four ninety-eight. Current tax levies, three hundred and twenty-two, six forty-eight, minus twelve forty-four. M V H, I didn't ask for any money in the local roads and street or C C I. M V H is one sixty-three, six twenty-nine. Maximum estimate, maximum estimated funds to be raised, twenty-five thousand. Current tax levy is forty-seven, which is a negative forty-seven point nine one. Which, the reason that our estimated civil max levy is three hundred and eighty-five thousand, four ninety-eight, the reason our general is so big this year is because I've been saving money for, since the casino money's here, is the why we have so much money in our general. We know we do not get that much in private, just so you're aware, so. And with all this legislation coming down, it lets, all right, so it's a really good budget. Um, we will meet Monday, September fifteenth to adopt this budget. Any questions?
Or any comments from the public?
Okay. All right. Now, to follow that up, I have to say this, J.C., we have been so lucky to have you and the town councils that have been here because they have been so conservative. I did a little digging on what everybody owes in the county. We do not owe one dime to anybody for bonds or anything. Wow. Just go to Indiana Gateway and look, and if you look under debt, it'll show you one area, but you have to go to where it says bonds, it'll also say bonds and it will say outstanding bonds and you can tell what everybody owes, any town that you would like to know how much they owe. So I have to say, been a pleasure working with town councils that are conservative. So, all right. Next thing, uh, J.C. can go and then I'll come back to me, I just had to have a public hearing.
Okay.
So thanks, you guys.
Yes. Tucker, your turn, sir.
The town ordinance violation case was held July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, and since that, since my last report to you, where the court held the matter under advisement, it's settled down in favor of the town completely, no doubt largely, John Collins.
And did he pay you, he already paid us?
I don't, I haven't heard, he paid the town directly.
Yes.
I haven't heard.
Okay.
Then on the seventy-six eighty-five West Ash Lane, that's the Darren and Melissa White ordinance violation. You told me at the last meeting that they were in compliance.
Correct.
So those were dismissed. And then the other public nuisance hearing, where was seventy-six ninety-four West Burke Street, that's Robert Gregg and Brenda Curdson set for hearing at two P M. On next Wednesday, August thirteenth. Council member meets his present test. Joey, what's the status of that?
So it's still done. I don't know.
I think, I went out by the Seating and they have done some more work.
Yeah, they, they pulled a trailer, the little trailer away.
Yeah, it had all stuff in it, it still had piles.
Yeah.
So they're not.
So they're not finished.
No, they're not finished. I, I, I was gonna go back out there and.
So proceed. John to.
I'll be there.
Okay, Adam will be there.
We'll discuss now.
Add him to attend. Okay.
You all told me about on the Coroglovi Alina property at four ninety-two North Hopkins, the property been sold to a man named Ibera from Northern Indiana. He had a phone number for it, so he didn't call. He had never heard of that, but, but it was under condemnation order.
Oh, no.
The seller made his hell. And then he proceeded to tell me, he runs a construction company there near Indianapolis. His plan is this gonna be his all, he wants to, he wants paid, and he wants to completely renovate it. Not tear it down, but use the, at least the structure of it to renovate the property. And, and, and it was pretty bad, the seller and the realtor, the devil's people was gonna really get with them. And I told them, well, the town, that's paid, he just wants the property renovated, but you show a good payment, that's what they're gonna work with you. And then I asked him to send me specific plans on what he's gonna do. I said, ask him on the phone, also by email, I sent him a copy of the notices we had given, and that invited him to send what he planned to do, but he was leaving the next day for vacation, which we threw today. So not yet heard any back whether he took back his purchase. Or he's on the side to renovate. So that's the status of that. I have a question on September one's Labor Day, Monday, that's your first meeting in September, are you gonna move it or cancel?
Cancel. And then we will meet on September fifteenth and adopt the budget.
So we're planning also.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you'll have to move it to. Yeah, I'll move to cancel our September first meeting and only have one, second Monday of the month and planning commission meeting, you know, that day.
All second, all favor.
Now, someone will have to notify the planning commission members, everybody.
Okay.
Okay. And bring that up tonight, did you?
No.
You may have already taken care of this, it's not an item for this meeting, really, because you told me it's the more last meeting, the letter to the Indian Department of Transportation concerning engine braking on Highway fifty-six.
Yeah.
Was that letter sent out?
Yeah, no. Uh, no, it's not Vincent Town.
Okay, well, I've got one data for today, so go ahead. You all, good sign.
Yep.
Billy to sign, or he doesn't have to, or it may be better if you, if you sign.
That, that won't be nice if they, uh, I don't know that, that lady has fun on the front hill. They get those brakes as soon as they get down, very hot in the morning.
Well, probably said, live, I should say, that I was asked about an ordinance to pass by the town, engine braking, but state controls State Highway fifty-six, so the town ordinance would be effective on a state highway. So we have to write, give the Department of Transportation official request to eliminate engine braking on that highway. Maybe in cooperation, pass another request.
This'll be nice. Yeah. You want to call.
You want to have Mars go on to those and have somebody consign them or what?
Yeah, I think we'd rather say that, and there's Billy's signs.
Well, we just put the, just call him and put the stamp, give it. Call him and ask him. I will take this to Mars. Have her call him and bring the stamp. One minute.
What's that on? Yeah, he's calling. You just can't, you just can't see it.
Yeah, he put it back down.
He scratched his nose. Look at the computer up there.
See the laptop?
Oh, he's trying to go.
Show him.
Huh? The YouTube.
Yeah, go to see YouTube, it'll show up on my YouTube. So I wonder if you can.
Mars is in there watching.
But you could do it.
Yeah.
Service. You don't have YouTube, but.
I guess not. You just put Google, just go Google, put YouTube, and then it'll be the town hall, just click on it live. Easy peasy.
Sounds exciting. It's really exciting.
Very exciting. Okay. So J.C., are you finished? Okay. Okay, back to me. Okay, um, I need you to approve the A spensing quotes that they sent to John about, uh, the twelve thousand, one fifty-three for the basketball court. Pass that over, J.C., sorry. They will be here on Wednesday. We hope. We, yeah, we hope. Can you believe we just now thought about putting fence around that basketball court? Those balls were flying everywhere up there. That should have been a no brainer, we should have had that up years ago.
Where exercise?
They parked up there.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve these fencing, the amount of twelve thousand, one fifty-three for the fencing around the basketball court.
All second, all favor.
All right, thank you. I assigned it. Okay, thank you. Next thing, I want to know if you guys will allow me to pursue getting quotes. You know where the playground equipment is, the lower shelter, it's like a little road. Yeah, it is, so, just to get prices.
Don't you think you want to talk to Brenda first?
I would.
Concerns, persons, that's.
I don't think it's gonna matter, it's pretty cool. Uh, I will ask her about.
You get quotes, I think.
I will ask her.
We have room for it down there?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's. It's gonna be on the right side. Yeah, oh yeah, that's, it's gonna be on the right side. This is the latest, this is, this is one of the latest things, so we want to be ahead of that.
Check with your insurance, make sure you.
Yeah. Okay.
Go with Mars.
Thank you, Mars, here, I'll come get him for you.
Well, you're a camera.
Take. Take. Oh, and also the dump it, the bucket dump, you know, we need two large, larger features up there at the splash pad. So I contacted Brian and told him to send us some quotes on that, because it definitely needs something high. Higher. So that's in the process, uh, next thing, um, we need to contact Cam and get some bids for the upper shelter house. Is there any agreement with that?
I think it's at least worth getting close.
So Mars is gonna call in tomorrow, because I thought John was going to.
I already talked to Kevin about the air heat.
Okay.
We might as well incorporate the basement too, on the do it, that way if something ever happens inside, we can use the basements already.
Okay. Alright, good, so Mars will contact him tomorrow. I sent him an email, but probably my jump. Okay, next thing, uh, Marcy has all of her paperwork in there for you guys to sign, mine was already in there, you signed it prior to the meeting. Um, Marcy's got on here about Keith Schaffer, then on the youth would like to have attorney to West Bay Springs Park, but he's not here uh, to discuss it Saturday, October eleventh, and Sunday, October twelfth, where he's aiding under boys to raise money for the travel walk team. He would like to use a new concession stand, which is, and he wants to know if insurance cover to his required, how much, his numbers listed in the folder, so.
We had a million, I think you had a million down here last time, J C, I'm making defense. And, uh, also, J C, all these controllers are still, for, you know, I know the little league, we treat different, but, but, we, we gotta time to show you.
Send us the Brent.
Right now, you know, that's alright, and, you know, that's what we always did. Now, this here, right now, they were twenty-five, and we need to, is this just something Mars can read right up, or do we have to make a?
I can send it to her.
Okay, you wanna, you wanna do that then? Uh, cause, are you agreeing with this, Adam? Yeah. So, uh, that was.
These are alright.
Yeah, them are alright, Mars just highlighted those, and for the controllers, that needs to change, where it needs to be a cat, you know, cash, because, you know, you never get a bag. Control, and then I got a few more things here.
Okay, so. I have to know specifics, or we'll just put updates, and then he brings it back, and then we'll.
We've used.
Updates to them.
Equipment sign out sheet, and that was Mark twenty-five, now it needs to be, you know, a hundred, so.
Alright.
It's just another date on the fees for the controllers. And, and another thing, in the past, and I don't know what this guy wants, you know, his, who's on his team, but in the past, we've never let anybody make money off the park. Either had to go back in, you know, to the youth league or whatever, but if it's all his kids on, or local, you know, kids in the community on his team, or you know, because it's taxpayers' dollars that, uh, supply the parks, so that's a message you might want to look at.
Because if ours is so cheap, J C, we'd have other people from all over coming in here, we fly in our park all the time. And we want it for our community, you know, for them to make money. Okay, J C, we'll fix it then, alright, that's all I have on that page. Do we need to do anything on this, J C, it's that new annual TIF reporting requirement, J C Council picking on before December first. That's, Swince, uh, Swince is gonna handle this, because I asked, just to make sure, I might do double check, so Bob Swince is gonna take care of this. Okay, TIF spending plan. Take a picture of this, do you want to take a picture with your phone, or do you want me to take this and you just take it?
Um, eight, eight one two, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Caesar, it's like, uh, it's a B E C, or I guess it's pretty funny, ad, ad company, L F C. She's in, uh, she's in the eight one two studios over here in. Alyssa Barnes. Yes, Alyssa.
Alyssa Burke.
Yeah, Alyssa Burke, she's Burke.
Gooseberry, yeah. Her voice is so sweet.
So you have goose?
That's all I have.
Yeah, we got two, uh, our water parks getting pretty close to being open, and we gotta hire somebody to do the water sampling, and I've got Nathan Schaefer here with the environmental science laboratory, or toy risk, environmental consultants, and, uh, they will do it for fifty per week, that's doing everything, takes taking the sample and getting this all paperwork and stuff back, so. And he does, uh, he does hotels.
Yeah, so that's the last year, we met them about a year ago, they've been great to work with.
I think he does the billers, he does, uh, his car, or whatever.
Pass that on to the other guys.
I'm making motion to hire him, this is our.
Okay, Adam.
All second, all favor.
Alright.
Thank you.
He will see that we pass our water sample. We have the pleasure of the president of the Spring Valley Water Board here. Do you have anything, uh, share with us?
No, sir.
Nothing?
Nothing.
We sure appreciate you coming to get it too, get it always shows up.
Are you talking to the governor, babe?
Nope.
We didn't know after our special meeting if we needed to be here. Up here.
No, we're all good here. Joey, you good?
No, I'm good.
Besides your truck being junky.
I'm, I'm gonna briefly bring that up on line. But I do have a slide up there.
Okay, Adam.
I've been, uh, approached by, uh, the director for the county, um, it, it sounds FEMA money for the road collapse on Homie Drive, there's still a lot to be figured out, I don't think there's any amounts known yet or anything. Um, but he did say his fifteen years of, in his position at Orange County, he's tried a few times for different, over the years, to get FEMA money for disaster relief or something like that, and this is the first time it's ever, it's ever happened, that we should, we're gonna get some kind of funding, it sounds like, so. Meeting, um, this week, with, and we met with him originally, a few weeks after the original collapse happened back in the spring. Uh, it would be the Saturday, the ninth, at eight thirty here at the town hall, uh, with FEMA representatives, so come to the town, have to be here, we're gonna tour the side and show them, you know, and, I can, I've been told they're sharpening their pencils and kind of give us a better idea of what they think uh, the fix would cost, money wise, uh, but we're, we're trying, now that's, it's been a talk over the last several months about what we can do, and, you know, we want to get a fix as bad as everybody else does, we're just trying to make, you know, make the correct move and do it the right way, so. But hopefully we'll have some more answers here soon, but we want to try to get it open, at least and drivable before the winter gets here, uh, just for school buses, and I think that's the, that's the route that most people take. I've lived up there, most of my, been relied to, and if we get, that's the route most people take, go up the hills, because it's not as steep as the other two roads, so. But hopefully, the next few weeks or a month or so, we should have some more information, we're trying to get it open as quick as we can.
That's promising.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what happens, there's still some questions, I think we all have a fight, and that kind of thing, so, but we're, we're hopeful to get some, some kind of funding for it, so.
Awesome. John, you have anything? Well, let's have a motion to adjourn.
I'm saying I'll sit adjourn.
Yes, I am.
All second, all favor, aye.
Excellent.
Thanks, Luke.
See ya.
Good to see you. Get here, dude.